Test, test, test. Test, test, test.
Ready? Like to call the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, October 16th, 2024 to order. I would like to start by honoring a moment of silence followed by the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Just so you're aware, we are being livestreamed. So for all of you that are to the meeting for the first time, that you will be recorded today. I'm sure you saw the signs on the way in, but I just wanted to provide a friendly reminder. The first order of business today is the approval of minutes. The September 25th, 2024 workshop meeting, the October 2nd, 2024 legislative meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I will make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Pries. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Next up is the October 2nd Salary Board Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt those October 2nd Salary Board Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Controller Bateman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Pies.
Good morning, Commissioners. On October 15th, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel concerning the purchase of real property, building maintenance, disability life, and AD&amp;D insurance and personnel matters.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pies? Hearing none. This is the first opportunity on the agenda today for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to to comment on any agenda items on today's legislative agenda? Any comments on today's agenda? There's going to be a time at the end of the meeting for public participation. But if you do have questions related to agenda items, you certainly can feel free to move forward if that's you prefer to wait till the end. Great, thank you. All right, seeing none. The next is an appointment of the Chief County Solicitor, Matt Owens Esquire. I know Mr. Owens has been the acting chief solicitor. This would officially put him into the role of chief solicitor for Dolphin County, and I'd entertain a motion for the appointment of Matt Owens to be chief county solicitor.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pries. Is there any discussion?
I just want to say thankful to have you on the team, thankful for all your work and effort. And yeah, just it's it's been refreshing to see your effort and the way that the Solicitor's office has improved under your leadership. Thank you.
I'd also like to echo those comments and say thank you for the professionalism that you are providing this county and this Board of Commissioners.
Well, I'd be left out if I didn't third that. But obviously, I think your perspective of being disconnected in some levels of ways to provide a a perspective which we can gain value and trust as we all learn. I know you've got a long litany of expertise in the area of real estate and a number of other areas of the law. And it's been great to be able to form a relationship and to benefit the residents as a result of your great counsel. So congratulations and thank you. All right, directors and guests, first up, a salary report.
We vote on it?
I'm sorry. All those, do you have a motion? We had a motion to second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same thing. I thought we gave the affirmation through our words. I guess we have to take official action. My apologies. Okay, directors and guests, Salary Board, Tanisha Whedon, Tanisha.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to request a vote on salary board items A and B.
Are there any questions for Ms. Whedon on A and B under the Salary Board Items?
I'm just verifying that these items are within the 2024 budgeted numbers.
They are.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I'd entertain a motion on Salary Board Items A and B on today's workshop or legislative agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Douglas.
Second.
Second by Controller Bateman. And just for the audience's participation, the Salary Board consists of the three commissioners and the controller. And for items involving elected officials, they would also be a member. And then for items involving the courts, the president judge would be a member of the Salary Board for that process. The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. All right, Human Resources Personnel Packet.
Yes, vote on all items one through sixty-two.
Nineteen was approved last week, correct?
Yes.
Yep. So this would be one through sixty-two, absent nineteen. Are there any questions on the Personnel Packet? Hearing none. I'd entertain a motion to be able to adopt the Personnel Packet today.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Pries. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Douglas, thank you. All, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Budget and Finance Director, Mr. Davis.
Commissioners. I have no changes to the investment report for the purchase order packet that was sent out earlier this week. The purchase order packet is ready for your
I might hit you with a side question that we didn't discuss, but I know you should be prepared. I know recently we went through a look at trying to figure out a way to address some of the debt and restructure the debt. But recently you had a ratings call that had a positive outcome. Could you fill the board in on what you had for me a little bit earlier?
Yeah, so we have routine ratings calls almost annually, sometimes twice a year if different agencies get involved. So we had one from Fitch to review the Bedford Bonds, and they reviewed Dolphin County along with that. When they did their review after their call, they upgraded our rating from double A stable to double A positive. So we have a brighter outlook in Dolphin County from a bond rating perspective.
So on the heels of borrowing and addressing a significant budget crisis, we still are in a position to borrow money with a favorable out, which I think is important to note. Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Yes, so when do you think we'll be getting the budget packets to each commissioner for review?
I just got the pension ADC estimates from Horn Ferry yesterday, so I should have those out in a week.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right. Anything on the purchase order packet?
Nope, there's no changes from last week, so.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the purchase order packet as presented.
So moved.
Second. Douglas, second by Commissioner Pries. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Chief Clerk's Report, Mr. Pies.
Commissioners, I have nothing to report unless there are questions of me.
Any questions for Mr. Pies? Solicitors' Report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved for action by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions for Mr. Owens before we entertain a motion to move the matters requiring board action? All right, before we call a motion, are there any items to be pulled out and voted on separately in today's matters requiring board action?
Nothing to be pulled out. I just want to comment on item number six. I know this was something that, Mr. Harwick, you were working on for a couple of years, maybe. It's been a while. With the Norfolk Southern Tax Appeal and our tax office and a outside counsel. And I want to thank you and the outside counsel, the tax office and staff for the work that was done here. And the numbers I've heard of are positive to the county for what we thought what may have happened. I think it's, it also benefited a local township and a school district.
Mr. Pries, thank you for noting that. I know the really central Dolphin School District had the most to gain or lose in this and really took a lead role in you know, with their impact, we wanted to follow their lead related to the negotiations. And I know they were actively involved in this process. But as we took this on years ago, it's interesting to know, and I'm not going to make statements that could be problems with future litigation. But the railroads seem to be covered under an old act called PERTA, which protects them from having to pay real estate taxes. But particularly at the Rutherford Yard and here in Harrisburg, the the idea of truck traffic and the impacts to the roads, to the communities that they serve. Obviously, you also have, you know, competition like UPS and FedEx that have to pay taxes. I think it's an archaic law. It still protects the railroad industry. But ultimately, we were told we don't stand a chance to be able to tax them. And we actually went and tried to figure out a way to ascertain value. And we settled on about twenty-two percent of the overall value. But it is a net positive for taxpayers and sets a little level of precedence related to this issue that I think will be followed by other counties as it relates to trying to gain some level of real estate tax revenue from an industry that has taken a lot, but never been really the greatest partner in helping to serve the community needs or the impacts related to their truck traffic and trains and such. So congratulations to our lead solicitor in this case and to those folks that have been involved. But yeah, and thank you for bringing to our attention, yes.
I have, I have two other items I have questions on. Item fifteen, the ratification of extension agreement between the county and RSR Realtors with Craig Ashenhour at Techport Drive for a one-month lease. That is specifically which department?
That would be drug and alcohol.
Thank you. And then my third and final question on the agenda items one through thirty-six would be item number thirty-four, approval of the 2025 renewal agreement between Dolphin County and Capital Blue Cross, memorializing the board's action on October ninth, 2024. But just for the record, that was option two.
Yes.
Do we have to have that stated in here?
We discussed it. No, but the agreement you're signing is that option or option two?
Thank you. I have no further question.
Yep.
Any questions? I'd entertain a motion to adopt items one through thirty-six today on the board packet.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Pries.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The ayes have it. Former business, the agreement between Dolphin County Probation Services and Cummins. Could you provide an update, Solicitor Owens?
That will be removed.
So we would note that that is no longer tabled and will not appear on a future agenda and reflect that in the minutes.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Owens on that topic? New business? Commissioners' discussions and actions? Mr. Douglas.
Okay. Yesterday, I met with VHH representatives and was provided more documentation for review. Along with that, they are compiling more information as well for me to review. I just wanted to express my thankfulness for their time and efforts yesterday to accommodate my requests. I also wanted to give an update to the public. Last week, it was shared that we had an inmate in critical condition due to a drug overdose. I had the opportunity to visit that individual on Friday at the hospital, and they were recovering well and making progress. As of this week, they are recovered and released from the hospital. I also have some questions just regarding our discussion last week. I guess I'm still not clear on who our broker of record currently is for our disability and life AD&amp;D policy. I feel like over the last week, it's been back and forth. Different sources are giving me different information. So can anyone with clarity provide who our current broker of record is for our Sun Life policy?
So at this point, there is confusion, and I don't think I can provide that answer with clarity right now.
Do we know who it was a few days ago? Like, when, when, when did the confusion begin? Because it was October ninth when I called. Broker of Record was tried.
So from what I understand it to be at this time, Tribin has rescinded, rescinded the broker of letter, broker of record letter for Dolphin County. They sent that communication to Sun Life on October eleventh. So as far as I understand it, Tribin is not. I don't know if that action then automatically reassumes EHD, which is our previous. But that is where I would say the confusion lies and what this listener was referencing.
From a state of, I guess, function, can a broker rescind a letter that was sent by, not the broker, but the county? Is that, is that what's causing the confusion?
I believe a Tribin rescinded was basically, they were removing themselves.
As the broker?
Yes, I don't, I don't know if they have. I wouldn't say they have the power to make a decision, at least as far as the county of reinstating anything.
So as of right now, we may very well not have a broker. That's, that's a potential option.
That could be an option. I don't know at this moment if that's accurate. Tribin can certainly rescind anything they want. They control their own destiny, of course.
Well, they can remove themselves as a broker, but rescinding a letter that was sent by an official of the county. I don't know that Tribin can rescind something.
Did they rescind a letter?
I think it's the rescinding of their own letter that they communicated to Sun Life is what they, I believe they're referencing.
Okay. I, I just am still befuddled by, by how we got here and how this continues to just be lack of clarity on what is taking place. You know, yesterday we discussed whether to rescind a letter that apparently was already to change a broker, that apparently had already happened on Friday. I guess I wasn't made aware of that and I continue to be left out of important information. Like, I, I, you know, I've been hearing a lot of feedback suggesting like I'm screwing things up around here. And if exercising my right as a sitting commissioner and requesting to be part of a process of screwing things up, then things were pretty screwed up before I got here. While some of you and others may prefer to keep things in the shadows, I'm going to continue to shine a light and say, these types of things should be done, should be clearly communicated. It should not be a question of who our broker of record is in October before we do a re-up for all of our employees. You know, I, I just, it's, for I can bear terms, it's a mess and I'm just, I'm rather fresher about it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd just like to follow up on those comments and just ask that our solicitor and chief of staff, get us a final answer on, on what is occurring here and what the answer is to commissioners' questions, because I have similar questions that I've asked in the past too. But moving forward, I know there are timelines that we have to live within a restraint. So this board is going to have to get our act together and, and find a solution to this issue sooner rather than later.
I, I will work with Vince and we will endeavor to do that, to do just that.
Commissioner Douglas. I, I'll state something just quickly related to this. Ultimately, I, I think we all can address issues of process and communication and that's failure. And to establish better systems to do so is critically important. I think it's also been a reinforcement to ensure that despite the clear direction, that every letter is read. And in order to do that, I think it in particular, it'll take a little bit more time to operate, but to get it right would be more important. And the outcomes in this case are critically important related to savings. I can't say that I'm not disappointed related to our current broker. And, you know, the idea that there are continual passing in multiple areas, as I've communicated with both commissioners, of fees without justification, not based upon utilization history or trends, but, you know, sometimes the more it costs, the more the broker makes. So there's not even an incentive to bring, you know, the potential savings forward related to some of these costs. So from my perspective, you know, I, I'd like to recommend publicly to the board, as I have done privately, a review of all insurance products that are currently provided throughout Dolphin County. And the idea of RFPing a, the provider and the broker of records. Again, I don't know how that works out with timing for this year, but I know Vince, you shake your head and that may not occur. But I've also know that the idea of six-month contracts may be possible. Again, having these kind of discussions, I think, and getting us on track, we should find solutions to be able to make sure that we're very clear that no longer is Dolphin County going to not address rising costs and allow for the people that are being paid handsome fees as a result of the negotiation of these things, to be able to sit on their backside and not bring ideas of savings, competitive market pricing, and an opportunity to allow for us to be able to benefit our taxpayers. That's ultimately what we should be exercising. And I'd like for, if the board is in approval, at least a plan related to what options exist for us to be able to potentially RFP both the broker and look at each individual line of insurance as we currently have them and have a discussion about where we believe we are being overcharged based upon utilization in the marketplace. And then we've got other concerns because we've got aging buildings that quite frankly have caused a, are deductible to go up. And we were talking about making investments to address that. So having an overall insurance discussion and figuring out the best plan for the next three and a half years on how we can manage those costs, hold the people that do business accountable and ensure that taxpayers are getting the value that they demand of us, is something that I would full and wholeheartedly endorse and ask to be addressed by the chief clerk in the solicitor's office. If it's, and it also something that the board would want to support.
I'll speak. I, I certainly support any cost-saving measures. I think I've made it clear from day one that I'd like to RFP everything. I think we have plenty of work around here that, that we can, you know, cut loose. And, and as far as I'm concerned, I've been asking for that since January, January second, twenty-twenty-four, when I took my oath of office. I just don't think any of that should happen in a silo. It should happen with all three commissioners being informed from the very beginning. And I'll also say this, and, and I've brought this up pretty early on since I got here. And it's something that I believe we have agreement on is that our solicitor would make, craft a lobbying disclosure agreement so that we can understand which entities are seeking business for the county but are getting paid by a lobbyist or liaison. And that we can have disclosed who that lobbyist or liaison is. And therefore they have to register with the county to be a lobbyist or liaison. And therefore we know the external interests where they lie. And, and these are all ways that we can professionalize our process to ensure that the taxpayers are getting the best deal. In this particular case though, while, while I appreciate the fact that it would save money, the, the challenge is there was just no need for it to be unilateral. I think that this particular effort likely would have had my support. I, I might have had some concerns with it, but even then, these, these are decisions we have to make as a board. Like, the, the process of the Board of Commissioners is that two votes are required for a broker to be fired or hired. And that, that, that must remain the standard. But I will officially, I guess, make a motion to direct. We don't need to make a motion?
I think just our statements in public offer the support and the direction to our solicitors and, and Chief, Chief Clerk to be able to allow and create that.
Can I create, can I, can I ask that a plan for lobbying disclosure be disseminated to the Board of Commissioners within two weeks? Is that a reasonable timeline?
We will do our best.
Okay.
And, you know, we've had some discussion related to that. And that's something I believe that is necessary. It makes it clear that we are open for competition. We want to understand the conflicts. It provides separation between decision-making and better understanding where interests lie. And I think it's something that will improve both the review of and the outcomes of these processes to ensure that the people we do business with and the Board of Commissioners are protected. And those are things I think the public demands and I fully support. So. Great. Any other discussion? Alright, it's time in the meeting to have public participation. Are there any? Oh geez, I, I, that has got to be a consistent thing that I miss. We've got to put it in red next time. The correspondence, one, two, and three will be directed to the chief clerk and we will ensure that we take the appropriate action at future meetings. Alright, now is the time for public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to participate in front of the Board of Commissioners? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and your address. And if you, if you can come up here. You said Angela Brown?
Andrea.
Andrea Brown. Welcome, Ms. Brown.
Thank you so much. Kind of low. Okay, so, um, right now, I'm currently in between housing. So I'm homeless right now. But I came here to ask for help in regards to a loved one that is incarcerated, currently being detained. He's been in the Dolphin County prison for a little bit over a month now. And he was just, just placed in a cell about a week ago, I would say about a week ago. But he was currently, I mean presently before then, previously, excuse me, being held in a dome, I believe. And he hasn't gone before a judge yet. So he's been exposed to lockdowns and, you know, same things that the other inmates, of course, are being, you know, held to or dealing with. And so I'm asking for help as far as him going before a judge. Because to my understanding, he has a right to a speedy trial. And he's, and if not done within seventy, seventy-two hours, something like that, if I'm not mistaken, then he should have been released. It's my understanding. So I didn't know who else to go to or who else to, you know, talk to in regards to getting him help in that matter. So that is my first issue.
I'm gonna let Commissioner Douglas, maybe provide direction. First, I just want to say thank you for the courage to ask for help. That's sometimes one of the biggest barriers and challenges to, to moving forward. And, well, you know, I want to connect you also with somebody from Human Services related to your current housing situation, but you're related to the prison, Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, certainly. As Commissioner Hartwick said, we have resources for those in between housing, dealing with homelessness. So please stick around after the meeting. Let's make sure we get you connected to those resources. I, I would, I don't want you to share your son's name publicly in the meeting, but if, if, or do you say your son? Sorry.
No, it's my loved one.
Your loved one. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. Your, your, your loved one that's incarcerated, if you could, after the meeting, maybe share their name with me, I will, I will look up their case and get in touch with prison staff and ensure that, and give me your contact information and I'll report back what I find out. But I'll, I'll see if they've been before a judge or when their next going to be before a judge. I'll also get you, if they have a public defender, who their public defender's name is, and then you could reach out to them as well. So after the meeting, please connect me with their name and I'll look into that.
Will do. Thank you so much.
So you said this was your first concern. Do you have anything else?
It was about homelessness. Actually, thank you for noticing that. Basically, I've experienced homelessness for some, quite some time. And a lot of the, the agencies that I've gone to, they've not really been helping. They've been more, I don't want to say corrupt, but it, it is a lot of corruption within, unfortunately. I've dealt with a lot of taking my information and, and using my name, using my identity, using my information, but not receiving the services, not receiving the support, not receiving the help. Actually, it's been where they blocked me from getting particular housing or certain housing some of the agencies that I've, you know, the peoples that I've dealt with. As far as the, on the landlord's side, they want, they are requiring that you're making three times as much income. And I don't know who commissions them or always, you know, governs the landlords. But I think that they should start being, you know, regulated as far as not requesting that, not being allowed to request that because I'm on a fixed income. I receive SSI for reasons of disability. There's no way that I'm making three times of seven hundred a month. You know, that's twenty-one hundred dollars a month that they're asking that I'm making before even, to me, that's kind of discrimination, you know. So that was my second issue.
We're interested in learning from your experiences and also connecting you with housing attorneys and advocates that can assist you. But even our own internal Human Services Department and working to ensure that we are aware of what's going on and, and we do what we can to be able to try to connect you with help that you need. So Julie, I'm going to have you come up after the meeting to, to connect and ensure that we make that connection. So, thank you.
If I may, just make one more, real quick. Regarding the homelessness, the criminalizing homelessness, the, they put, I have noticed no trespassing signs at bus stops. And to me, it seems as though they've been targeting the homeless. And I know there, there was mention or talk chatter, if you will, about them removing the, the families or individuals from the riverfront homeless encampment. But to me, that is like, that's not a solution to the problem. It's a problem, it's to the problem. It's creating a bigger problem. Because there's really, we know the housing is scarce. And so it's like the state built in the state farm.
You talking about State Hospital?
Yeah, thank you. The State Hospital, they closed down years ago. And, I mean, there's a lot of people that are, that should probably be in the hospitals. They want to arrest them and put them amongst, you know, others who are not, don't have issues mentally or emotionally. I, I don't see how that would resolve. So I just wanted to include my two cents.
Well, I won't give you my twenty cents on that because it's a longer discussion, which, you know, about treatment of mentally ill folks and the resources that were promised after deinstitutionalization that has never occurred. But, but ultimately we want to figure out a way to assist you, direct you and make connections. So if you could just hang out until after the meeting, we'll make sure that we try to make those connections for you today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any? Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Joanne Seabird. I live at seven ninety-nine High Street in Bresslers with our township. And I'm here to voice concern I have about some loopholes in early voting. My brother received a notice in his mail addressed to my father, informing him and reminding him of the early voting process. I wonder how this is possible. My father has been dead for fourteen years and he didn't vote for seventeen pairs other than his home address where he lived for ninety years of his life and the last four years of his life at my address. I wonder how my brother got this sent to his address. As soon as I've heard of this, I went to his house to receive the mail, the mailing. He had thrown it into his recycle and recycle was picked up just hours before I, my arrival. So I don't have any documentation or I would not just be here voicing my concern. I wonder how it was sent to his address. My personal take is that he's the only Democrat in the family and a staunch Union supporter. And that's my opinion. With Pennsylvania being a swing state and the election being too close to call for either candidate, my antenna, my antenna went up. If dead people are getting mailings on how to vote early, what else is in the works? I'm sure my deceased father isn't the only one who got these mailings. I did read an article in the Castle Vote where same thing is happening in Illinois. Another swing state, swing state, a man's wife who's dead for ten years, a mother's whose child A mother's whose child who didn't vote for up to seven years, it got the, but they got mail in ballots. I'm not sure what my brother received. At least my brother was honest enough to throw it away, but not smart enough to keep it and questioned the validity of this document. I have heard pre- in, at previous meetings, your concern of Ryan running a fair and legal election, and I don't doubt your sincerity. But there still may be some nefarious people out there trying to sway the election. My final comment is to thank the commissioners for their reluctance for moving with our precinct uh, number one voting place from the Bressler Firehouse on the suggestion of a township commissioner who has an ax to ground. Ryan, thank you.
Thank, thank you for bringing those concerns forward. Um, I, I will, just, my, my response is without documentation.
Right.
There is no claim that I, I, from my perspective, we need to examine. There are multiple third party or other individuals that are not officially from the Dolphin County Elections Bureau that may be sending mailings to confuse or direct you. I will say one thing and I'm gonna say it very plainly and clearly, is as, as clear as I possibly can. This election, there are no areas where we believe there is any level of fraud. We are running a very directly open, transparent, accessible election. Uh, and the idea of those kinds of issues, if you have evidence, we want to examine all of those issues because we have an obligation to examine all of those. But without evidence, um, you know, the idea of claims that, and other claims and there, there's been claims made for a number of years that the elections are not correct. Uh, but there's, there have been very little evidence that have been presented to uh, back those kind of claims up. And I just want to make, make it clear that in Dolphin County, we take any of those claims extraordinarily seriously. We would provide an investigation and in the conclusion uh, to ensure that those concerns would be met. But without evidence, um, you know, the only thing that I believe this does is try to instill additional concerns, which we want to make sure from the Dolphin County Elections Bureau uh, and our examination of both our tabletop, our emergency response plan and the election process are not occurring here.
Well, that was, and that's what I said. I, I understand that. And without the documentation, I go no farther, further than this comment. But I'm trying to put it out there that if anybody else has received something like that, come forward, present it to you.
Absolutely. We, we have a responsibility to examine anything nefarious.
You guys get a chance, bug.
But, and I've seen no evidence um, to this point. So uh, if you have any, please bring it forward and we will conduct a full and thorough investigation.
Brother was honest enough to throw it away, but not, not smart enough to keep it, so.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Good morning.
Well, my name is Kimo Davenport Junior. I was in jail from twenty nineteen to twenty fourteen. I was just released about a month ago. During that time, the Dolphin County Court System had custody hearings without me being present. I was not served correctly and Mr. Kreske, Dolphin County Court allowed the custody of my child to be taken away from me without allowing me to attend these meetings. I'm here to ask for accountability for the Dolphin County Courts. I haven't been able to solve any con- I haven't been able to have any contact with my child since I was uh, stripping of my custody. I've gone down to legal aid and they are not giving me any information on any paperwork. I never received anything from this county, from this county other than uh, losing custody of my son.
Uh, but first of all, um, there is uh, an individual that handles uh, the legal proceedings. I believe it's um, Bob Lieberman uh, from the Children Youth Side. And this is again, a court matter. Uh, but Julie, again, can we connect you uh, to ensure that your concerns are raised? First of all, you know, uh, I'd rather have a father here fighting to be involved with their child. And uh, i- if that is in fact the case, uh, we gotta figure out a way to connect you now. I cannot speak for the court process or the outcomes or what has occurred in any of those ways. It just suffices to say your intent to be involved in your child, with your child is well received. And um, you know, obviously, we want to make sure you get answers to your legal questions. So Julie, again, uh, if she can, the young lady back there with the red hair, um, if we can get your name and information and try to connect you with both the legal representation uh, from Children Youth, maybe the Public Defender's Office also as it relates to representation. Um, and to see, you know, whether or not any kind of notifications or whatever were violated. That, again, that's a court process and something commissioners don't handle, but we can connect you to attempt to get you answers. Yep. Thank you, sir. Good morning.
I used to work in the, the Human Service uh, system and so forth and have been very concerned about mental health issues. Just something has been brought up here, is a reoccurring problem with that. And I understand I got here late.
Could I ask your name, sir?
I missed the, the vote. Go ahead.
Could I ask your name, please?
Oh, sure. My name's Keith Benz. That's B E N T Z.
And the, address?
Uh, eighteen twenty Ollie Street.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Proceed. That's fine. Yeah, um. The system that's being set up is a drop-in center, the Emergency Care Program that um, we've been hearing about for the last six months or so. I need more information. I attend uh, a monthly meeting that supposedly this November is going to actually have a representative from that group come and speak to, speak and so forth. But I'd like to have some physical information about that. I need to know what you guys know about that, is that their construction's gone on down at Case Management uh, and, and so on. People that I've worked with um, are losing their housing now because funding for certain programs are, are being suspended or any. I don't actually have an aim anymore. You know, they were in apartments and so forth that paid for by groups like Keystone and CSG and so forth. But now there's no money available for them to maintain those programs, so shutting them down. And when their contracts run out, for example, then they have to find new housing. Um, Case Management's per uh, person in charge of all the case manager, it's assured me that they're finding housing for them. And I didn't know what you knew about any of that.
This is another, a longer discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Just a quick public update related to the Crisis Center. Um, that, obviously, that's a three-county initiative.
Understood.
Between the Dolphin, Cumberland and Perry, an attempt to help divert um, individuals who are struggling with SMI uh, with a, a no, no reject policy. So if you're presenting, you will be seen. Uh, and it's a twenty-three-hour stabilization center. That's meant to attempt to divert individuals from the front door of the hospital room, emergency room, or to the booking center.
Yeah, particularly when crisis intervention's not able to handle it any.
And, and there has been, you know, successful effort with law enforcement to be able to divert folks. But the challenge that still exists is that this system is woefully underfunded. Um, you know, the idea of housing, uh, the idea of, you know, what happens after twenty-three hours? The idea of ensuring that we have a level of support built out and then find some help with permanency are still major challenges uh, within the behavioral health system. And we'd be glad to have the, connect with uh, Andrea Daler, who's our Director of Mental Health Autism and Developmental Programs.
I've spoken with Andrea. She actually was on a Zoom call last month.
I believe sometime in early November or early December. I think it may be early December, there is a planned opening for the Crisis Drop-In Center. I'll get you the exact.
After it being pushed back a number of months.
So, yeah, so um, uh, we will, again, try to connect you with as much information and internal resources to be able to make sure you're.
The name of the company?
Uh, they're called um, Connections.
Right.
They are an Arizona-based company, correct?
Right.
They, they're, there was an RFP process that was done and there were multiple folks that responded. Uh, they appeared based upon the review committee to be the individuals that provided the most innovative uh, ways to address uh, a walk-in center. Uh, and they had an extensive amount of history in their area. But again, they're adopting a number of practices to how this works here in Pennsylvania. Uh, but ultimately, uh, this has been, you know, a challenge to figure out from behavioral health uh, man's care reinvestment dollars to maintain, to finding the uh, ability to, to build uh, the center. But the regional cooperation that's going on is the only reason that it's happened because no county individually has the resources to be able to build something like this on their own. So, you know, it's a, it's important that our partners are also recognized. So I'm not going to get into details. I see everybody huffing and puffing. We will um, uh, connect you with um, Julie Mackey as well and, and then Andrea Daler to try to follow up with the information.
Emergency care, is that, or the mobile care units, are they gonna be run by Connections as well?
Well, there's a discussion about how um, our mobile response is going to occur. Um, there's not been any formal decisions made. They have an interest and history in doing that. But uh, there's not been a clear level of direction because right now, you know, each one of the, but Cumberland County contracts out for their mobile services, Dolphin County has um, a crisis uh, uh, team here in Dolphin County. So there's not been any determination of how that looks, but we're thinking about the best way to collaborate and make it a regional response.
That's gonna come before you guys for a vote eventually, or?
I, I, as far as the uh, Connection Center, I don't think there is any vote scheduled for the Board of Connections. That's been, um, no, not to my knowledge.
So it's, that's a done deal in that sense.
It is.
Okay, good.
Uh, well, well, maybe you and I could spend some time together, too.
Well, we have, and in some instances, you may not remember, like uh, lunches on City Island.
Oh, with the advocate groups?
Sure.
Absolutely. But I, I, based upon your questions, it sounds like we could help equip you with a whole bunch of information, so.
And I've been trying to get that through case management stuff for a while.
We'll set up a time.
It's good.
Yep.
Because I'm gonna be there on November.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Thank you for your advocacy. Yes, ma'am? Welcome. Name and address?
Um, Marcina Rogers, nine fourteen High Street, Bressler.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. While I understand the confidentiality is a thing, I want to address the disappointment with Dolphin County. My son, who spoke Kimo Davenport, was incarcerated. This county made a rash decision to tear my son's custody away. I reached out to Kreske, the office, to no avail. Did I get any answers? I reached out to Dolphin County CYS and nothing. I reached out to Mr. Hartwick and nothing. I asked, my ask to put forth some accountability where your checks and balances, would you process for venting CYS cases? I've spoken with Randy Eager. I've spoken with Lisa Weller, who oversees them. The only individual who has been willing to help and navigate this situation has been Mr. Lamont Jones.
I, I appreciate your comments and again, the, the court process is something that we can assist in trying to connect you with.
The court system.
Uh, this is a, uh, obviously something that has been a, a process that's been run through our court system. Uh, so uh, again, the, the commissioners do not control the pro- the court process in this case. And, and again, I, I'd have to look a little bit more into the matter and, and we'd be glad to try to sit down with you right after the meeting.
Okay, because I did, I also emailed everyone. Everyone has received the email from.
And, and I think we forwarded all of your information along with the Children and Youth already. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Morning, all.
Good morning. You're very busy, I see.
As are you, as are you. Good morning.
Good morning.
It's me, Carter Sire. Address is two four zero nine Beach Street, B E E T H, six one seven, one one zero. I'm just a little follow-up with uh, Ms. Marcina and Kimo. I'm also here in the same capacity, just not the exact same capacity. However, I am just asking for assistance from the commissioners. I don't, I did not know that you did not oversee Dolphin County, uh, Dolphin County Court Systems. However, I'm asking as you oversee like the county agency such as CYS, um, as well as housing of the, housing authority and things of that nature, any other things that you oversee. It seems that the like system is failing. This is, uh, I forgot her name, did it say? So it seems like the system's failing and it seems as though like things just are falling through the cracks or I don't want to say it's corruption, but it's things are just falling through the cracks all over. You have thirteen-year-old children getting slain in the streets. You have children losing their innocence due to like the negligence of the housing spaces such as the key fong, such as health self. Like things aren't being done correctly when it comes to housing. You are having these issues. Um, and then it's just like issues that are going forth within Dolphin County Children Youth. These issues are all starting within the homes. And so it seems as though some of the caseworkers or things of that nature that are within the Dolphin County Children Youth System aren't equipped to do this work and that is okay. However, that means that they need further training or anything else that comes along with doing their actual job. So if Dolphin County doesn't have the capacity to take one of these things that are going wrong within the county, such as the housing, such as uh, things that are slipping through the cracks of Dolphin County Children Youth and like, I think that's something that should be transparent to the county, like, hey, you just don't have the capacity to take these issues on. Um, I feel like things should just be handled accordingly. Again, we're just asking for transparency. Uh, absent like, and you said, like, our emails have been sent to the courts in Dolphin Children Youth. However, I've emailed Mr. Hartwick. I didn't uh, email you to, I do apologize for that. But I have emailed Mr. Hartwick um, on numerous occasions. I think it's up to like twenty at this time. Uh, and again, Mr. Lamont Jones is the only person that has been like an advocate in this space for me to speak about the things that are going wrong. So again, maybe I'm not getting things correctly. Uh, I don't know how cases are fully vetted when they are within Dolphin County Children Youth. So maybe we do need to have a sit-down and you can explain that to me so that I do have a better understanding of how that works. However, I am just seeing things just fall through the cracks and something like that. And I'm not sure if you oversee Dolphin County Children.
I do.
You do?
Yep.
Okay, so I would like for us to sit down and explain to you what that really looks like for you to have like a case and how that is fully vetted throughout your systems. Um, again, so now I was just like asking for like accountability when it comes to these spaces. Uh, you have, again, children that are falling through the cracks. You have a thirteen-year-old that literally was just murdered in the streets here. You have a thirteen-year-old in the summer that just killed someone. You have children losing their innocence because of them. We're just not paying attention. We are fully vetting these issues that are coming before us. And I get it. Everyone's busy. Like I said, I'm very busy. Everyone is busy and I get it and I get, no one is getting paid their work at this point. None of us are. But that doesn't give you an excuse to not do your job. And I'm not asking anyone to, to do something that they didn't sign up to do. I'm not asking you to, to, to chop down wood when you sign up to be a, a caseworker or to be a manager or anything of that nature. I'm asking you to just do your job. I'm asking for you to, the things that you, you promise these people to do, I'm just asking you to do that. Asking for accountability, asking for transparency, asking for those things, doesn't seem like a big thing for me. It doesn't seem like I'm asking you to, to, I'm not asking you to promise me gold. I'm not asking you to promise the people gold. But here you are in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. You are the capital of the state. You've set precedent to the rest of the state. If you have things falling through the cracks here and you just have this, and, and Mr. Douglas said it, it's, it's just a mess at this point. And I get it. It's a mess. However, you address the mess. As ugly as it is or whatever it is, whatever the issue is, cut it off at the root and then you work up from there. But again, we're just asking for transparency, accountability and things that you could have fully vetted. These are things that we are just asking. You're the next generation. We're failing them. We are failing them. They're going into, into prisons at thirteen, fourteen years old. We are failing them and we're not, we're paying attention to what's happening in their homes before they even get to that place. You want to stop recidivism? You want to stop a lot of these issues that you're having in this county? You've got to start when these kids are younger. You cannot wait till they get to fifteen and be like, oh, let's fix the issue. Let's just keep locking them up until we fix it. It doesn't work that way. We have to start at the bottom and it's dirty and it's messy and it's ugly as it is. We have to address these issues. No one really wants to do that. We don't want to, but you have to. You have to. We have a whole next generation that we are failing in this county.
And, and I will tell you that um, I, I, I joined that passion. Um, there, there's a lot of um, of things that, that can be clarified. I mean, from the city of Ha- Harrisburg runs their own housing authorities. The county runs their housing authorities outside of the city of Harrisburg. So, and when you talk about housing in the city, there is a housing authority for the city of Harrisburg. And then there's a housing authority for thirty-nine municipalities that's around the city of Harrisburg. So um, when those concerns are being directed, when they're related to um, Dolphin County housing uh, and areas that we are impacted. So um when those concerns are being directed, when they're related to um Dolphin County housing, uh and areas that we are impacted, Commissioner Douglas is the oversight related to housing, and he may be able to assist you inside the city. Lamont's a better advocate because uh the the idea of city council and the mayor, uh they receive their direct HUD funding. Um, and we are not uh in a position to be able to effectuate uh the outcomes of their direct funding. And it sounds like a government pact passed above, but we're just trying to let you know, they're they're responsible for the implementation of
Harrisburg housing.
Harrisburg and federal dollars that come into the city. They have the ability to direct CDPG home dollars and other monies. They also are responsible for, you know, the idea of safety of and 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 public safety in those issues. And I think the county can always play a role in providing support. As a matter of fact, we've had a number of discussions about uh a a gang task force and a violent crime task force to be able to ensure that our communities are safe. Uh, and and and, you know, the idea, we had a long discussion last week about juvenile justice and the ability to provide diversion. So I I always get inspired when I see passion in front of me because we need your service. We need your i- eyes and ears. If we want to protect our kids better, we have to figure out a way to make a response known to children and youth as a reporter. Like, you know, the communities without their eyes and ears, we're never going to be successful in doing that. And you have to reestablish a sense of trust and build that. But I will tell you, there's, based upon children and youth side, uh, we are down right now to thirty vacancies, which is a lower number than we had pre-pandemic. Now, I'm not saying there are a lot of longstanding employees, but we are making strides in trying to fill the staffing levels. And it's clear that this is just not a Dolphin County problem. If you take a look across the state, uh I think there's like fifteen or sixteen caseworkers in all of Blackwater County. Uh, so uh we could use your help in recruitment of people from this community to be able to look towards and to assist in helping our most precious resource, our children, because you will find a partner in me to do that. Uh, if, and and again, asking for help is a big piece of this. The community has to be an essential participant in the solutions. So we gotta take that passion, maybe educate about where those responsibilities lie, and figure out the best way to put those passions to work to be able to protect their kids and have better outcomes. So I want to thank you for bringing that here uh and and attention. And again, I want to try to follow. The challenge is, when you come to one person related to solving court problems and other issues, if it's a children and youth problem, we get you an answer.
Okay.
And the the, uh, in my experience, and I'll just be open and honest, they're usually emotional issues with multiple sides to the story.
Correct.
So, you know, if if you're happy, there may be the other t- side of the story that are are really angry, and they'll come in here and provide the same level of outcome. Um, they're they're extraordinarily gut wrenching, and unfortunately, in my experience, oftentimes the individual that's hurt is the the kid who were, who didn't ask to be put in this this position that folks are fighting over related to custody. And we've got to ensure that they have a level of safety and permanency that is going to be conducive to their best interest. And I think when the kid gets involved in the system, it's not the way we want to go. We'd rather engage family members, other supports, and ways to be able to see a non-system related child. Uh, but ultimately, we've got a a responsibility to protect their safety if those safety issues exist. So um again, these are the kind of conversations we can have, and and I would assure you that it's it's not an uncomplicated answer. Uh, but I will provide you and some direction to get you engaged and hopefully put your passion, because it sounds like ve- very busy people get things done. Uh, and if you're a very busy person, we could use your help. All right.
I mean, I did speak to, I've spoken to Randy Eager as well as Mr. Marissa. I don't know her last name.
McClellan.
There we go.
Correct.
I have spoken to these people. Uh, however, I do get hit with the confidentiality thing, so I get it, but uh.
And and again, there there are laws that govern trying to give information out related to whose child it is and ensuring that those those laws are not violated. And sometimes they become frustrating, even when we're trying to report to the news about issues that are going on that we have to protect the confidentiality, and it's not necessarily non-transparent. Those are rules by which we have to operate in order to protect uh both the the identity and the safety of a child. So um that, it again, the these kind of conversations are good, though, because they allow for better understanding. Hopefully, we can get you engaged. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Pam Parsons, City of Harrisburg. I was listening this morning, and some of the things I heard, I heard about savings, how to do things that benefit the taxpayers, value for the taxpayers. Um, I also heard cons- um woefully underfunded. And I heard issues raised about um from the people who were up here speaking about accountability, transparency, and we're failing our youth. So I was working on a project this week in looking at uh gun violence in the har- in the city of Harrisburg. And because I could not find the data that I was looking for locally, I had to go to the National Gun Violence Archive. And in searching that database, I had to search for just Harrisburg, which will give me every Harrisburg zip code, including um Steelton, Swatara, Susquehanna, Lower Paxton, and West um, West Hanover. And so in the last three hundred and sixty-five days, there have been fifty-four incidents of gun violence in the greater Harrisburg area. And that is excluding death by suicide. That's a whole, that's a
Category.
whole nother bucket. This ranges from a man who brandished a gun at a political rally to um children being hit by gunfire, to a five-year-old shooting themselves in the hand, playing with a gun, to death and to injury. I'm not going to read you all the names because I don't have all of them, because it is a tedious process to get to that. But these, and I haven't looked at the whole county yet, but I will by next week. So just these fifty-four incidents of gun violence, and I'm hearing issues about money and about being underfunded. And I will go back several weeks when there was an opportunity for you to end the contract that you have with Mr. Haste and the Great American Outdoor Show slash the NRA. We clearly have an issue with gun violence, and yet we continue to pay this man money to promote guns. I know we can't sell guns at that event, but it is an event that promotes guns. When we talk about money, you had an opportunity. He's also on a paid board. You had the opportunity to take him off that board, and you chose not to. So between those two, I think that was sixty thousand plus sixty thousand, there would be another hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So I get tired of hearing about transparency, accountability, underfunded. We don't have enough, and it's someone else's responsibility. We are all complicit in that, and I'm using we because I include myself in that. And I'm tired of hearing people being blamed for systemic issues because we don't look at the systemic issues. And I'm gonna keep coming back, week after week, with the numbers, with the math, and with the names. Thank you.
And just a- as as you mentioned, you talked about the the Commissioner Hayes comments, just, I guess I shouldn't respond to all of these, but uh, the Board of Assessment Appeal is twelve thousand, uh I believe annually, uh and the contract is sixty thousand. Um, just want to make sure that's clarified for the record, and I know that um, you know, we're not going to debate revenue comes in and and those issues. But even from the mental health side, you have to understand that there, that the me- mental health funding that comes to Dolphin County is a function of a state-funded, county-operated effort. It's not about blame, but it is about the reality. Um, the one, you know, the option of how you carry that out in a time where you don't control the resources is extremely challenging. And that we are attempting to re, you know, both advocate on the state and national level. That's why I continue to be at the table to ensure that that voice is loud and clear, even with the governor's offices as recent as two weeks ago. Um, but uh, unfortunately, these are not easy solu- it's not just all one pot. You know, it's it's state dollars that come into the county to administer. We are a state-run county-administered human service location where the decisions for money happen externally, and we are forced to make decisions based upon, excuse my language, how the proverbial shit flows downhill. Uh, and and the idea of making decisions about other people's funding challenges, here's the reality. And I I don't want to get into debates, but the reality is, when you're not representing other larger interests that impact the state legislature, um, that the first thing that gets cut in a area of priorities are mental health. How many votes is that helping me with? You know, the areas of human services that don't have strong advocates, lobbying groups, from the state perspective, continue to be the first area that are excised and passed on to local county taxpayers. So from a perspective, it it, it's not like we make these decisions, say, we're grateful for the resource we get. No, we say, damn it, they're not enough. They're not enough. But it's not like we are not doing what we need to be doing at both the state and national level to be an advocate for these issues and ensuring that we're at the table. To be honest, I've spent a lifetime attempting to try to resolve the wrongs that have been done related to our behavioral health system. And mental health is not a crime, but unfortunately, that's the only place folks who have mental illness end up. And we're trying to do things at all levels to address that. But again, we're dealing with a hand that we're waiting for, wh- 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 what comes from on hill. So if you want to help, the help would be to talk to your state representatives, your legislature, the governor, the senators, and say, where are you at on mental health funding? The county commissioners have a request in for an additional two hundred and fifty million next year in the state legislature. You know how much we got? And we're grateful for it, but, you know, we we got twenty million. And uh the the amount went to the schools that you're using for metal detectors, not behavioral health buildup. I mean, we want to have a real conversation about who's funding the system, how it's working, and the inefficiencies of building out the correct system. I'm willing to have that public debate, and you would find that I'd be at your side with the legislature, but we just can't assign responsibilities to folks that don't have the oversight or the fiscal controls that exists related to the resolution of these issues. But we do need help and advocacy, and that passion you showed here, it's certainly passion that can be, when people come to your house and ask you for their vote as state rep or as senator in other areas, you certainly can help us in making sure they got a plan and they're willing to support this and hold them accountable. I I.
Hi.
Name and address, please.
Onosai, Swatara Township. Um, wow, Commissioner Hartwick. Um, you know, listening to how you just responded to Pam, um, I actually like, I'm kind of like in shock because Pam and I have lobbied for lots of things together at the State Capitol, um Whole Home Repairs Program. We talked about it before. There's a lot of things we lobby for at a lot of different levels. There's a lot of things we are for. And to hear you talk to her as if she's not somebody who participates in lots of different avenues, actually like, I'm kind of taken aback, but I'm going to
I'm I'm asking for her help. I I'm asking for her help.
My comment.
And to to get respect, you give it, and I will give you respect as well.
This is public comment, so I'm gonna take my comment. Um, so I uh heard a lot today. Um, again, to echo a lot of stuff we say all the time, a lot of stuff is about transparency and accountability. Um, one of the things I heard is that you guys are gonna get budget packets next week. And that is exciting because, you know, budgets are how we show our values out here in the community. It is how we get things done. Um, and we count on you guys to be stewards of the large sums of money that us taxpayers pay to this county. Um, and it is hard to believe after some of the things that I've been hearing for the past couple of weeks that this county is in a position to make serious decisions about this budget. Uh, we don't even know who our broker is on certain things. After weeks of commissioners being left out and asking not to be left out, and every week coming back and hearing the same thing happening over and over again, and it's led to a point where we don't even know who people who are like being paid by the county are. Um, again, to echo Pam's comments, you guys have had ample opportunity to uh end paying Jeff Haste money. A former commissioner, uh so people know, who has been still on the company dole um for, even since he has stepped down as commissioner. And speaking of which, I would love to know if um this board here has taken any time in investigating any of the decisions that have been coming out of the board that Jeff Haste is on. In any way, is there corruption there as we've seen come out over and over again? Are you guys looking into that while we're paying him twelve thousand dollars, or are we gonna have to wait for a story to come out and pen luck about corruption in that board? Um, yeah, uh, I think that there is court that we can cut loose. To quote Commissioner Douglas, and I think it's Jeff Haste, and I think you guys know that, and there's plenty of other people in this county who can do a job. I don't understand what is the holdup and why you can't let that go. Um, and this, to quote you, Commissioner Phee, this board needs to get its act together, and that is absolutely true. That needs to happen. Like, if we keep talking about a budget deficit, and we we can't even get an act together. We can't even read letters before we sign things. Like, my kid is in ninth grade. She takes business law at Central Dolphin School District, and they teach them. Before you sign something, you read it. Now, she's fourteen, so I I'm hoping she's reading the things before she's signing them. But, you know, you guys are adults. You ran for this office. I think you can read the contract you sign when it comes to being stewards of our money. I don't think it's too much to ask for. I don't appreciate the combative tone that you take with the public when we do our duty of oversight of you doing your job that we pay you to do. So, um, yeah, I just really can't believe that week after week this is what's going on here. Final statement. I want to speak uh again about the firehouse in Bressler. I live in Anhot, right down the road from that firehouse. I understand that there are people in the community that may have ties to them who look different than me. Um, and we know that that reason is because people have been systemically excluded from participating in things outside of voting day at that uh firehouse. So what I would say is I will continue to advocate not to spend the county money on a firehouse that's been shut down by the township commissioners and to, not now, it is too close to Election Day. But going forward, I think that this county could use the school that we have right up the street, Tri-Community Elementary. It would be a great place, pulling place. There's handicaps spots. I'm pretty sure it's ADA accessible. Like, the kid went there, like, it's a great place, and there's no reason for us to be spending money on this fire, closed down firehouse. We need to be saving money and using a school right in our community. So, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Commissioner, how are you?
Good, how are you? Councilman?
So I just want to uh speak to what the family was was talking about. Uh, you know, I know it's tough being an effective official, being an effective official myself. Uh, there's a lot of responsibility that we have uh for our community, uh and they deserve answers. So I I sat on those uh emails, and uh I think uh OJ, I don't want to say his name wrong, but his name is stepping in for Senior Man's. OJ?
I I think it's OJ.
OJ, OJ, okay. Okay. So, yeah, um, I I seen him respond, and 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 what I'm gonna ask here, and you guys know me pretty well. Uh, I'm an advocate in a lot of spaces uh for our community. One of the things that I would say, um, I didn't know that you guys were short-staffed in the CYS area, but it's very concerning looking at those emails when I was reading and the lack of response to those, to that situation. Um, being a mandated reporter myself, if you see a child that's in in trouble, or indeed we are mandated to report it, but when you don't get a response, man, that that sends people into uh rage, so to speak. So um I would ask that you guys use, use, utilize Lamont Jones in the, in the way that I'm saying that. Uh, you know, I'm an advocate in a lot of spaces. I'm boots on the ground. You guys have a lot of things on your plate, and that's understandable. But use me, let's communicate uh to help some of these uh individuals that are going through, that are suffering in our community. Um, children and youth, I don't uh want to uh 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 beat them up anymore that they've already been beat, beat up on. Uh, but I think that there 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 really needs to be uh some accountability in that area when it comes to our children.
So so how about this, Lamont? Um, we we've got a number of efforts that are going on there. Um, we, we've got a number of efforts that are going on there with all child serving systems, um, for diversity, equity, inclusion, figuring out ways to, um, be more responsive and reflective of the communities that we serve. How about we have a day that we invite community members to come in and make connections and to see a little bit more about the operations in children? You help coordinate an effort like that. I think opening up and, and ensuring that we have personal relationships. Now, the challenge is, uh, in many cases, um, you know, confidentiality may not allow you to be in the room with folks that are talking about those specific issues with children. But there's no reason you can't form relationships, uh, make sure you have direct connections and the community has connections. I think a part of this whole initiative is, and Judge Royce Morris and I have all had deep conversations about being more forward-facing, uh, holding a series of public meetings and ensuring that, you know, we open up and internally, uh, do the hard assessment in order to ensure that we are, uh, uh, much more reflective and open to the communities that we serve. Um, the idea that, uh, we can do that in a coordinated way is something that I would support, obviously. And I know, uh, if the board is in agreement, it's something I think that would be helpful. And, uh, ensuring that we both have internal relationships and the ability to, um, you know, understand the operations here from people directly who are making those decisions. Because making, yeah, there, there's always, there, it's, the answer is never exactly what is intended in many cases or and it's a lot more complicated than just asking. There's usually sort of a legal or other reason behind, um, why you can't get information, but ultimately we need to make sure that we have those connections and we need to make sure that we're addressing the concerns in a timely manner.
So, yeah, that, that's fine. But what I'm, what I'm actually talking about, when we even having those meetings, we really need to have a structure around, you know, at, at my position, um, I get emails and I have constituent services. I have to respond. I have to make sure that I'm addressing the issues that I was put in that seat to do. That's my responsibility. So I'm saying, um, you have, you have staff. You, I don't have a staff. Hold on. I don't have a staff, so I have to go out and do the work, right? So what I'm saying is if, if it's systemically, if we're looking at that structure, we have people that are in these positions that are supposed to respond. I mean, getting no response is, is an issue for me. You know, because we have to take, like, you say, let's, let's meet.
Hmm.
Pe- people are getting paid. I'm dealing with that right across the street. I'm looking at people get paid that aren't going to work. And that's not fair to the people. That's not fair to the, the, uh, the families that we are here to, uh, serve and, 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 uh, provide information for. Um, it's just not fair. And I think that, and I'm not saying you, I'm saying to look at the, that, that department that you chair and, and make sure that they're responding. At least, hey, you know, we, we got your email, uh, but we're down thirty staff. Just give them some type of response. That's all I'm saying.
Uh, I, I agree. A, a, a response is, an acknowledgement is key. And I know every single correspondence that we have have been forwarded to the appropriate agencies with a response.
They didn't get a response back though. So they don't know if it was forwarded. They didn't get a response. That's all. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. We, 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 we will talk about how we work on a, what we can respond and expectations about how we can better communicate.
All right. Thanks.
Yep. Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you for that participation. Um, now is the time in the meeting, uh, that we will accept the motion
So moved.
adjourned. Motion made by Commissioner Pries.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? All those in favor, meeting adjourned.